This is Mike Tillis and the Manistee County Commission. This is the February meeting. You can watch this program on Access TV 189 or go to ManisteeAccessTV.com.
Everybody ready to rock and roll?
Yeah, we're ready.
All right, well, call the meeting tomorrow. Order. Please rise to the pledge. Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to your Republic with holy hands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Wait for your votes for me, it'll be good enough to leave some invocations, please.
I'm not sure what salutation you're gonna use, but most of our project is, so I'm pretty happy. For the invocation today, I'm drawing upon the morning prayer by Martin Luther. And there's one adulation in that Paul Vansen quote over there, singularly. "In the name of the Father, and the Son, and of the Holy Spirit, we thank you, our heavenly Father, through Jesus Christ, your dear Son, that you have kept us this night from all harm and danger. And we ask you to protect us this day also from sin and every evil, that in all we do today we may please you. For into your hands we commend ourselves, our bodies and souls, and all this is ours. Let your holy angel watch over us, that the wicked foe have no power over us. Amen." I'd like to mention too that if anyone has a particular dedication or prayer they might want that they want to read in the chat, or if they want to do it themselves, I'd be interested.
All right, thank you. All right, the clerk will call the roll, please.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Here.
Commissioner Dan?
Here.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Here.
Need a motion to approve the meeting agenda?
I'll make that motion.
There's a motion, support for that?
Second.
We have support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, we have the motion, need a motion for the consent agenda. Minutes of the January 17th board meeting, the February 10th study session, and the February 2017 monthly appropriations.
Make the motion.
Motion of support?
I'll support that.
Okay, we have a motion in support, any discussion? Clerk of color roll, please.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, we're up to public comment. Does anyone out there wish to address the board? One, once? Once? All right. Moving on. Recognition, announcements, and correspondence. Mr. Kaminsky.
Well, I really don't have anything other than the joint court minutes are on your desk because they met last Thursday after the agenda was put out, the agenda packing, so just so you know. That's it.
Okay, well, that was easy. Mr. Comer, you're up. Treasurers report.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Well, on January 25th, I held my show cause hearing with any taxpayers that wanted to come in and discuss their delinquent taxes for 2014 and older taxes. I met with 20 different individuals on that day and entered into hardship agreements with 16 of them, and two of which I've already paid, which surprises me, so that's a good thing. We held our foreclosure hearing on February 9th up in Circuit Court. We foreclosed on a total of 228 parcels. Of those 228, they have until March 31st to come in and pay those delinquent taxes to avoid the foreclosure process. In 2016, we foreclosed on 251 at the foreclosure hearing, and all of them came in and paid with the exception of 26, so I expect that most of these people will be in and pay those taxes before March 31st.
What does that number get us for 2015?
For 2016, 251. We foreclosed on 26. So, we, we, it varies between, you know, 25 and 40 parcels. It's usually, you know, somewhere in there that we foreclose on every year. We try not to foreclose on anyone's principal residence. We give them every opportunity that we can to avoid the foreclosure process, but sometimes it happens. Hopefully not often, but sometimes it does, so. But, so it's gonna be busy for us in the next month with the foreclosure, and then also as of March 1st, the townships no longer have the authority to collect taxes, so they will be turning all of their unpaid taxes for 2016 over to us. They reconcile their books, they turn it over to us, and then we schedule an opportunity to sit down with them and go through the settlement process to make sure that their books reconcile with everything that they've paid, that they've paid to us, that they've paid to other local units. You go through that process, and then, once we settle with them, then we will determine how much we owe them and pay them out of the delinquent tax revolving fund, and so they will be made whole. I don't know if the new commissioners understand that process, but the townships, all the local units, the townships, the schools, everyone is made whole by the delinquent tax revolving fund, so they have no outstanding taxes that they are to collect, and we collect all of those taxes at the county level once March 1st comes around. So, that's another thing that puts March as a very busy thing in our office, with that and the foreclosures. And actually, it's already started right now because taxpayers who have 2015 delinquent taxes have until March 1st to pay those taxes to avoid going into what's called forfeiture, which then they have another year before the foreclosure. But on March 1st, any unpaid 2015 taxes go into forfeiture, and there are huge consequences in the number of fees that are added on there, and the plus about seven and a half percent interest goes on, on that date, plus close to $300 in fees. So, we encourage everyone to get in before March 1st and pay those delinquent 2015 taxes if at all possible. And the only other thing that I have is, I'm still working on the land bank. I spoke with the head of the Michigan Association of Land Banks this morning. She and the treasurer from Kalamazoo are planning on coming up and holding some public meetings. I've been trying to schedule that, but our schedules just haven't worked out yet, but hopefully that will be within the next couple of weeks. I have the inter-local agreements from two other land banks. We're going to, you know, basically copy those from Manistee County, and then we will send them to the state land bank and have them approved, and then they will come before this board to be approved, and that'll be the beginning of the process. And then someone, when that, when I bring those documents, I will have someone from either the state land bank association or another land bank come and explain the whole process to me. I did go to a meeting that was held by the state land bank on February 2nd. Pauline was there. We've got some good information, so we're working in that direction to get the land bank going.
Do you have a perceived timeline?
Well, I had hoped to have the land bank in place by March 31st. That may not happen, and maybe by the end of April. There's really no need to have it before then. The whole function, or one of the main functions of the land bank is to take properties that we foreclose on, and they go through the first and second auction and don't sell, and then generally they're transferred to the land bank. Sometimes we will come and ask you to use your first right of refusal to transfer a property to the land bank if we think it's something that the land bank could redevelop and get back on the tax rolls, but that's, that's not something that usually happens. Occasionally, that happens. We've got, you know, we've never really had a need for a land bank before because generally everything that we foreclosed on either sold in the first or second auction until the last couple of years. And now, there's been, I think, three small parcels that didn't sell that we, I would ask you to transfer to the land bank once the land bank has been, you know, those are properties that we're just holding in the county treasurer's name at this point. One of them is half of someone's garage. Another one is a small triangle piece that, you know, and hopefully the land bank will be able to take those properties and then make an arrangement with the person who owns the other half of the garage, and combine those into one parcel and then get it back on the tax roll, and then, so that person can then be paying the taxes on that parcel and get it. And that's, and there's another small piece that's next to another piece of property that we would probably just talk to that landowner and have them combine those parcels and get it back on the tax roll, probably sell it to them for a dollar or something like that, you know.
Are you still looking at having some public meetings?
Yes.
Public meetings?
Yep, yep.
Dates to be determined?
Yeah, well, that's, I was talking to the person from, who is the chair of the Michigan Land Bank Association this morning, and we didn't get a chance to schedule, I'm gonna call her back between 1:00 and 2:00 this afternoon and try and schedule those dates, something that works for them. I had hoped to do it before the end of February, but it just didn't work out, so we're still working on that, so. Any other questions?
How many public meetings will you schedule?
Probably two. So, probably one during the day and one in the evening, so everybody will have an opportunity to come. If they can't come during the day, come in the evening. If they can't come in the evening, then maybe they can come during the day. Any other questions? If not, thank you.
Thank you, Russ. All right, we'll go on to our Ways and Means.
All right, Ways and Means Committee, met on Wednesday, February 1st, 10:17 at 9:00 AM. Our three members present, our adjutant chairman, Richard Schmidt, and Brooke Schaefer. And from there, we'll go to the comments report. Okay, we hear our submit claims from January 14, 2017 through February 1st, 2017. Summary of the on-demand checks for review and approval. On-demand checks totaled $111,056.60. Payroll for the period of January 14, 2017 through February 1, 2017 totaled $259,836.37. That includes one payroll, unused personal day payouts, and three separation fees. Total claimed and allowed February 21st, 2017 is $733,390.83. I'll move to approve the on-demand checks, bills, and payroll accepted in the amount of $733,390.83 and save the place so far. I'll second that.
Motion of support, any discussion? Clerk of color roll, please.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
The next action item to the committee was a payment of unused accumulated vacation, sick, and personal hours. It's moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Schaefer, to recommend the approval of unused accumulated vacation, sick, and personal hours to Kerry Merkey, employee of the friend of the court who retired from court employment effective January 31, 2017. The amount to be paid from the employee's separation fund is $16,411.65. The committee thought that was a pretty big amount, but she has been an employee for a long time, and with the courts, they're allowed to carry forward those benefits and receive compensation when they retire or quit. Make a motion to approve payment of the unused accumulated vacation, sick, and personal hours for Kerry Merkey. I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion of support, any discussion?
I have a couple of questions regarding, actually both of these. The unused sick leave for the court employees, are these employees joint court employees with Benzie County also?
Kerry Merkey is not, but we do get some reimbursement back through the CRP contract, I believe.
Okay, so then is this just Manistee County's portion?
Well, this is, this is the total amount, but then, I'm sure that then they submit some of that to the CRP, and we get reimbursed. It's lumped in with a whole bunch of other stuff, so you won't actually see. That's not a net amount, that's a gross amount. The reason that carries is high also, is not only because of the vacation policy of the court, but because she's such a long-term employee, she still has accumulated sick time. No one has accumulated sick time, no one is accumulating sick time anymore. It was disbanded many, many years ago. There's probably only one or two employees, I'm probably one of them, that still has a sick bank, and I don't even have that large of a sick bank anymore because there was a program started several years ago that still is in existence, but I don't think there's very many people with sick bank anymore. But we could actually buy that at 85% of value, and years ago, I bought some at 85% of value when I was buying my house, I think, and so I don't have as much, but there's very few of us that have sick time anymore. That's why, one of the reasons why that's so high.
Okay, thank you.
That's a very good question. I actually came up at a meeting, a way to make a pretty good discussion about it to understand those situations. Good question.
All right, no further questions. Clerk of color roll, please.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Okay, we also have a payment of unused accumulated vacation and personal hours to Casey Hogan, the Circuit Court Juvenile Division employee. She resigned from court employment on 2nd January 6th, and the, what?
E.
She, E?
E.
Sorry. The amount of money that we owe is $1,395.87. And I'll make the motion to recommend approval of payment of the unused accumulated vacation and personal hours to Casey Hogan.
I'll second that.
Okay, we have a motion of support, any questions? Clerk of color roll, please.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
The next action item for the committee was a service agreement between the city of Manistee and Manistee County Prosecutor in Manistee County. And see, we have some representatives from the city here, too, they may have some questions. There is a long-term agreement, service agreement, between the city of Manistee and Manistee County Prosecutor and Manistee County for a prosecution of specific city of Manistee ordinances codes and state statutes identified in the city's code of ordinances. This proposed agreement is for an 11-month period, beginning February 1, 2017 through December 31, 2017, for a total of $11,355.50, so which $6,132.54 is paid directly to the prosecutor's attorney, and $5,223.56, or 44, 46% of the compensation is paid directly to the county. The annualized fee from the city to the county and prosecutor's attorney is the same as in 2016 contract. Again, I question this in that are we receiving compensation appropriately for the services that the prosecutor is providing? And, you know, I feel comfortable that, that the agreement has been a good agreement, it's good to work together with our units of local government, and there's opportunities to save money and still obtain those services, it's a positive. I just want to make sure that we're not subsidizing any other local unit development. It was moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Schaefer, to recommend approval of the service agreement between the city of Manistee, Manistee County Prosecutor and Manistee County for the live-only period between February 1, 2017 through December 31, 2017, and I'll make the motion to approve that contract.
Motion?
I'll second that.
And support, any further discussion?
If I could just...
It's 11 months.
Well, it's actually gonna be, because we're at the end of February now, we're not gonna change the agreement, but the payment will actually only be for 10 months now because we're already at the end of February and the prosecutor and the city, the city has approved it, and, but because we're at the end of February, you're approving it, it's actually only gonna be for 10 months. We're actually gonna get a little bit less money, one month, one, one twelfth less, and the cities, the prosecutors are also gonna get one month less. Plus, the prosecutor is not just taking all that money himself, he's sharing that, the city payment, with his assistant prosecutors who do some of that work. So, those are the only changes. There's not gonna be any changes to the agreement, but the actual payment's gonna be. It's not real clear, and I think with our new, the district court magistrate has offered to provide better statistics on what is actually city ordinance work and what's not, and so the city will have better, a better idea on whether they're getting their bang for their buck, too. So, they have the same concerns, so that's why it's only a one-year agreement, a little bit less than one year.
Well, I support cooperative efforts between local units of government, so I just wish to...
All right, clerk of color roll, please.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
The next action item, let's see, the sheriff was here, too, so it's good to see. Was regarding a new desk and furniture for the sheriff's office. Sheriff Laika requested to transfer approximately $5,000 from the sheriff's contingency surplus fund, which has a balance of $9,162.01. Will the purpose of purchasing a new desk and furniture for the sheriff's office? That explains, he gives you some details. The items have been purchased recently, as the old furniture is approximately 25 years old. Mr. Kaminsky explained that the amount of $3,890 would be transferred to the general fund they paid out of the equipment line under improvement by Mr. Schaefer, seconded by Mr. Schmidt, to recommend approval of sheriff's office desk and furniture, an amount of $3,190 to be transferred to the sheriff's office contingency fund, find item 216-0039013, and all members of the committee were in support.
Need a motion on that?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, support?
I'll second, and I think we're missing something here, Tom. We had the desk and the furniture, wasn't there something else we had to add, the sheriff had to add?
The jailed one, which is...
The next one?
The next one.
Okay, I knew there was another thing to talk about.
The only thing I'll add to this, so everybody understands, is this was ordered under the previous sheriff, and it's come into play for our new sheriff. And anyways, at any rate, I just wanted everybody to be aware of that, so not saying it's bad, good, or indifferent, it's how the, how the flow was on the ordering process, it's all good, so. At any rate, all right, clerk of color roll, please.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Thank you.
The next item, which Mr. Schmidt is speaking about, is a jail cell block D new shower. Lieutenant Steve Buzala, jail administrator, explained that cell block D was expanded about two years ago, and a new shower should have been included in the job to accommodate the expansion. Lieutenant Buzala requested approval of up to $5,200, which includes installation and shipping for the shower, and Lieutenant Steve provides some detail for you. It's moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Schaefer, to recommend approval of up to $5,200 to be paid for the sub-block D shower unit to be transferred from the jail's contingency fund line item. All members of the committee were in support.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion of support, any further discussion?
I'd like to reiterate the fact that these motions that you've seen come past here, the last couple, have come from the individual departments' contingency funds. These are funds that they've accumulated by being diligent, savings of their annual budgets. It's not coming out of the general fund, it wasn't a programmed cost, it's being covered by monies that they've put together for, for these types of situations, and I think they need to be committed for that.
I think also, I have a sheriff's here, too, I think that's a state requirement for this, based on the number of inmates and stuff?
Correct, and we didn't know that when we first were expanding, we were finding ways to add additional beds, and by doing so, for every 15 inmates, you need to have an additional shower space, so with our count the way it is, we were just a little short of that, so we figured we would go to our contingency fund and make that happen. Again, we're growing within ourselves without coming back to the board, so I think we're doing a pretty good job there.
Thank you.
Great point, Russ.
The other thing that I wanted to point out, too, with this that came up during the public safety meeting, is that the shower will actually be installed in a location where there's an existing sink, so the plumbing is already present. That will also add some efficiency to the project as well.
All right, there's been a motion of support. Clerk of color roll, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dan?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman? Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Thank you.
Well, the next action item was county clerk staff certification. Jill Novak, county clerk, explained the video recording had begun in some courts as the video recording equipment has already been purchased. Ms. Novak noted that even though certified electronic operator certification is not required by the state to operate video recording equipment, the court in the state court administrator office suggests the certification to maintain an accurate and complete record of court basis. Each one of the clerks in the clerk's office has indicated they're willing to expand their skills and become certified to perform this important duty for our courts. Ms. Novak is very proud of them for expanding their skills, taking on additional responsibilities, and looking in the future. Again, there's detail in the staff. The staff from the county clerk's office takes on this responsibility, eliminating a court recorder, not the stographer in the court rooms. To that said, Ms. Novak requests up to $2,000 to be transferred from the county clerk contingency line item for online classes, testing, certification fees, and travel to Lansing Community College for five clerks. This expensive budget, as the video recording duties were not an issue at much of time. It was moved by Mr. Schmidt, seconded by Mr. Schaefer, to recommend approval of up to $2,000 to be paid for certified electronic operator online classes, testing, certification fees, and travel to Lansing Community College for five clerks to be transferred from the county clerk's contingency line item. All members of the committee were in support.
There a motion for that?
I'll make that motion.
Is there support?
I'll second.
Motion of support, any discussion?
I thought this was gonna come forth first hand.
This is two different things. This is actual training, I'm digging into, and then what we will be dealing with is compensation and personnel.
I was coming from the point of defining what this role would be. You know, this is a job change. This is an additional duty, which means job outline, you know, is, is being affected, so we're paying for it before we even discuss it. And I didn't know all five, I thought Benzie County was gonna send some people here, but that's...
I think Benzie County, the story, the jury's still on, they need to determine what they're gonna do.
Right, so it was all up in the air, so I didn't know we were going ahead.
This meeting had taken place prior to the court meeting on Thursday.
Yeah, I didn't realize.
Did I tell you to have heard it before someplace?
I have a question about the court recorder, I know it's been discussed in the past, I can't recall the amount of... I can't recall the amount of money that we pay for the court recorder that would be replaced by the service through the clerk's office. Video recording? I know there was a significant cost in there. Twenty-three thousand?
Twenty, yeah, twenty-three thousand.
Twenty-three thousand. Because I think, you know, we just, as you brought up, we just had a discussion about additional duties for the prosecutor and providing additional money for the prosecutor for taking on additional duties. And I think it's openly meaningful that if clerk's office is taking on additional duties, that we provide some additional money for that as well.
That's what we're going to deal with in the personnel, trying to come up with a solution, to figure out how we're going to pursue this compensation.
See, I thought, an answer to your question, I thought, Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, that it was kind of determined between the judge and the county clerk that the clerk's office would do this work. So, there, this, this motion gives them some money out of their contingency surplus to get that training. But how we pay them extra, whether it's in addition to their wage, or if it's just when they do it and they get a stipend of some kind, is yet to be determined by personnel. But I also can understand where you're coming from.
Yeah, I come from that, that place of when you make changes to job descriptions and you're talking about additional certifications, those type of things are personnel first, then pay, not pay, then personnel. And I'm looking at it as a bigger picture and what regards to the outcomes will be, the expectations. I mean, that's all going to be discussion. But, you know, I'm going to have five different people to...
Do you have any?
But I, you know, I, I get it, it's into the contingency fund and I get that, I understand that, and you got to pay for it, there's a role in that, it's already happening.
I guess my only thought is, is this is the training aspect of it. We haven't come to terms with the, at the actual cost of what it's going to be for the employee, what additional compensation's going to be. And I guess if, my thought is if we don't have a personnel meeting exceptionally fast and if we waited to do all this at that point in time, it could hinder the process of this plan.
The other, though, what it's just that there, this enrollment is not until May because you have to, I think March's section was already booked out, so you have to do it a bit ahead of time too. So, they would just go ahead and enroll and they'll be certified either one way or the other, whether you pay them to do it or not, I guess, you know, but that was the reason why I'm going to...
Well, we have a motion of support. Any further discussion?
Well, this will be going to personnel, to, to, you know, what the table needs. So, this is really just providing funds for the...
Allowing out of the contingency fund.
Maybe both issues should be, at least go to the statute act.
Is that okay with that, Karen? Are you going to hold up? All right, clerk call their roll, please.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
No.
Commissioner Jakush?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, the next item is very interesting and a long one and a tough one. Drain commissioner discusses outstanding invoices. Our new drain commissioner, Mr. Hilliard, Ken Hilliard, who is, there we are, good, right here. Newly elected drain commissioner, appeared before the committee to discuss 14 outstanding invoices, and you've probably looked at those in appendix G, which he has discovered in the drain commissioner's office. Mr. Kaminsky added that some of the invoices should have been previously submitted and rejected if they were not a McGinnis and Kettlehold drain or Kettlehold drain. Mr. Hilliard explained that there were six from the law group and eight engineering invoices. I don't think I'm going to read through all those. I think you can look at those, see those, unless you want them there. Bills from the Conner Law Group, which is appendix G 65, on the cemetery drain is $3,693.40. And the appendix G6, Bear Lake drain is $247. And appendix G7, Onekuma complaint, $1,627.40. And G8, green drain, $3. And G9, managed wastewater treatment plant, at $6,192.21, which attorney has agreed to waive payment of this invoice because it was not an activity of the county. And total due, the Conner Group Law Group, is $5,671. It was moved by Mr. Schaefer, seconded by Mr. Schmidt to recommend approval of invoices 3511, 3490, 3525, 3489, 3531, and 3491, amount of $6,520.56. To DC Engineering, to be paid from the drain commissioner's contraction services line item in the general fund, and to recommend the approval, legal previously stated, a total of $5,671. Also, the cemetery drain, $3693.40. Bear Lake drain, $247.20. Onekuma complaint, $1,627.40. And the green drain, under $3, distributed to the Conner Law Group, to be paid from the drain commissioner's contraction services line item in the general fund. And all members of the committee were in support. There's some other miscellaneous from the county drain commissioner. Do you want to do that motion? I guess we should. I'll make that motion.
Can anybody have a motion, is there support? Support? Do we have support? Any discussion regarding this?
I have some questions about this. I'm wondering, first of all, some of these invoices were from a few years ago. If these were previously submitted or not? First of all, I don't believe these were in the budget and were not approved previously. Do we even have a responsibility to pay these out of the general fund? Do we have a drain revolving fund? And I'm wondering, you know, do the county taxpayers need to be responsible for these bills at this point?
I talked, based on our discussion, I talked to the prosecutor. He feels we do need to pay these because he was doing this work on behalf of Manastee County in his position as drain commissioner. The, I lost my train of thought. What was one of your questions? Whether we need to pay them and then...
Differentials.
Oh, we do not have a drain revolving fund.
And they're so old.
Some of these bills may have, I couldn't tell you exactly if every one was submitted or not, but if they were submitted in the past and they were tied to a drain where we had no money in it, in the fund, we didn't pay them. We'd send them back to them and say, send us, you know, we're, there's no money in these, in these...
It's not an act of the right.
Right. And we do give him some money and his, we do give the drain commissioner a few thousand dollars each year in the general fund budget for various things that might come up. Like, there's a, there's a lawsuit thing in there, you know, on a flat or whatever, that, that we never even responded to because it was determined by the attorney that, that we didn't have any role in that. And I did talk to the attorney, which was mentioned by Mr. Bergstrom, about the wastewater treatment plant issue because the drain commissioner came to us, came to this board and stood right at that podium and basically said, I'm doing that on my own. I'm doing that as a citizen of Manastee County. And then all of a sudden, we see a $6,000 bill from the attorney for, for work he's done and looking into what the city's doing with its wastewater treatment plant, which has not anything to do with the drain commissioner. And the attorney said, don't pay that bill. He says, so, if you pay me all the others, which are, you know, cemetery drain, Bear Lake drain, Onekuma complaint, green drain, which come to $5,000 some odd dollars, and then there's the McGinnis and, and Kettlehold drain monies that go to him and to the engineer that are, there are funds available in those drain funds. And that's really what, what's being approved here today. All I can tell you is the prosecutor, that's, that was his initial thought, is that we do need to pay these.
Tom, should we have the drain commissioner weigh in on this too? Maybe he's got some comments?
Oh, sure. All right.
Can you have any, we can hear a lot.
No, no, forget it. Okay, well, Forest Beach is a residential area that's going on right now. Okay, the engineer at that time did some work for Mr. Smith. Okay, so we're obligated to pay that. We should be reimbursed for that. The developer has to put up the funds to compensate Manastee County's expenses, which would be, have an engineer and attorney look at, at the funds and stuff like that. So, we should be reimbursed for the $1,201.22 for the Forest Beach project. The drain commissioner versus Phillips, the engineer did some review work for Mr. Smith at that time. He's, of course, not a drainage issue, it's a lawsuit. And so, he asked the engineer, they're looking to it, so I believe they're responsible for that. The treasurer and Rachel and I met for, what, almost what, two and a half hours one day? Discussed all these bills and we feel that, you know, under, Smith authorized these bills under the drain commissioner, acting drain commissioner, so unfortunately we feel that we'll probably end up having to pay them.
The net, the net cost to your general fund for all these bills is going to be less than it's going to, you're going to actually gain because we also submitted a bill, or are in the process of submitting a bill to the drain commissioner for some work done back in 2010, 2011, which the county weighs and means committee and the county board approved to start looking into the drain, the McGinnis drain. And in order to do that, they had to front some money for some studies to be done. And in their discussions, they said, if this ever becomes a drainage district and we actually do a project, we want that money back. And I think there's about $11,000 that's, I think that's the right amount, that's, that's going to be reimbursed to the county. So, it kind of takes care of all these, all these...
Well, it's still county money going out. It doesn't matter many of it.
You are, yeah, you're recouping, I, I should rephrase that. You're gaining, your general fund this year will have a positive impact from that reimbursement, but you're still out that money, you know, from previous years, if you add all the years together.
So, the other question that I have, the cemetery drain, the Bear Lake drain, the green drain that are on this list here, if there is a drain fund that's established in the future for these drains, will the county be reimbursed for that money?
Well, they would be reimbursed under reassessment to the drainage district. Okay, let's see, there's a couple ways you can know about it, which Manastee County in the past has done, is the previous drain commissioners, if they had a problem with the drain, would just ask the, the county board here for some funds to take care of the drain, I mean, cleaning it out and stuff like that. Right now, there's no funds in any of these districts. So, I, if I need to do some work on these drains, would have to come to the county board and ask for some money, not just go ahead and order the work done.
Or activate the district and then, well, the maintenance fund for that district, which was talked about months prior to the election.
So, if there was some costs incurred prior to establishing the district or having a fund available?
Well, these, these districts...
Are we liable?
Oh, yes. These districts are already established. Okay, cemetery drain, Bear Lake drain, now, Onekuma, that's, that's not a drainage district, and green drain, those are established drainage districts here in the county.
Okay.
Okay? So, if they need work done on them, which there's no money in their funds, I would have to come to the county board to get the work done. And then I would recoup those monies by assessing the people in that drainage district. That's how that works.
I have one question too. It looks like there's still an outstanding balance for Kettlehold drain then of, I think up to $14,315.
Actually, I think it's $21,000. The total is $21,000 something. I think the total of the Kettlehold drainage district due is $21,000 something. If I remember correctly.
The county portion of the Kettlehold drain assessment is $5,649.46.
Correct.
But the, the public, the people, the residents within that drain...
Well, the total would be $21,000 of everybody. That would also be Stronach Township paying their share, Manastee County paying their share, and then the people in the drainage district paying the rest of it.
Have they been notified of that then?
Yeah, they were notified, yeah, a lot back last year sometime.
Bob, are you aware of this and you know the figures? Is it...
What I'm aware of is what we just went and checked for.
And how much was that?
That was somewhere between $5,000 and $6,000.
Yeah, it's about the same as Manastee County.
Twenty-five, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Okay.
The, the McGinnis drain bills...
If I could elaborate for a second here, Tom. I was under the understanding that the people in the district was charged a one-time fee by the previous drain commissioner. He charged them all the first year rather than spreading it out. I wasn't aware that there was more that they have to be assessed at, so...
No, there is no more. The assessment, there is no more of that.
Okay.
The assessment's out. The assessment's for $21,000 and some odd cents. And that's all there is for one year. No more.
Those two, those two bills, the McGinnis drain assessment of $181,250 and the Kettlehold drain assessment of $5,640, you've already approved last month. You approved to take some of the surplus funds we had, rather than spread that out, the McGinnis one, we're going to pay it all, and then we're also owe the Kettlehold drain assessment.
Well, at this point in time, I don't believe that I have enough information to make a totally informed decision to pay these bills. And I would like some additional time to be able to make a little bit more informed decision before we commit additional county taxpayer money to it.
I, I don't know what else we can give you.
I, I guess, I guess my question is, what part of it don't you understand?
The part that I'm having a difficult time with is that I don't see where, you know, some of these, you know, some of this will be reimbursed. And I actually spent a lot of time on this too, but, you know, the cemetery drain, the Bear Lake drain, the green drain, these are things, I'm not certain that this is something that needs to come from the general fund, that this isn't something which, that belongs in a separate assessment. The drain commissioner's duties are one of, I think, the most confusing things in state law. And I would just like some additional time to have a better understanding before I'm comfortable with it.
I can really understand that because over like, at least four years now, maybe six years, we've all been learning a lot about the drain code and, and learning about the process and trying to keep a handle on what's going on. And there were some things that weren't going right. And I would just say this, it was kind of a mess. And if you want to spend hours and hours trying to figure all this out, that's fine, but I'd like to just move on on this and wrap it up.
The, the, the point that you make as an example, let's take the green drain. That's $103.30. You're absolutely correct. The drain should pay for that function. There should be a special assessment out to those people, which would require them to pay a portion based on their part of the drain. But $103, $103, the process to get through that is...
Significantly more than the cost of the work that was done.
And I agree. What I'm looking at are things, you know, my understanding is that the, we can prove up to $2,000 on this. I, I would, I'm just saying I'd like some additional time to just think about it. Because I've actually done a lot of research on this and it's still, this is really confusing.
It's, it's a perfect example, the drain commissioner's gone wild.
Absolutely.
Because for the last four years, he basically functioned without any control. And not that we want to control the drain commissioner, but we have a drain commissioner now who understands that he's dealing with the, with the public's money. It's not, it's not an open checkbook, that he can just do what he wants. And I, and I appreciate that, you know. The last drain commissioner didn't. He didn't make a decision that was his unless it came from a lawyer or an engineer. And every time he did that, it cost the taxpayer money. You know, I'm with Mr. Bergstrom. I think we need to, to accept, this is a bad word, but the mistakes were made by the drain commissioner in the past and rebound. $103, even five or $6,000. It was a learning experience. It was drain commission 101. And I, I think that we have a, a process now that we're going to be happy
And I, I think that we have a, a process now that we're going to be happy.
We have a competent Drain Commissioner now, and he has provided.
Well, we hope so.
He's over here and tight on that stuff.
Yeah, well, he's already done a summation of this, and I think he's done a good job of it. And I guarantee you that you will be studying this for a long time if you're going to look into it. I would, you know, we've, we've been working on this for six years. And, you know, I can understand your wanting to understand this. I tell you, I worked hard to understand this, and it's hard to do, it's really hard to do, especially when you've got a Drain Commissioner that was doing some interesting things. So I don't.
I, I appreciate the concern for the late fees coming in, bills coming in. There, no question that's a problem, but that's a reflection of the previous Drain Commissioner in my eyes. The other thing of it is, this county, this board does not fund that office to much of a level either. So there's very little discretion for that Drain Commissioner, whoever it may be, to accomplish some of these small things. I guess I'm with Brooke and Mark. I appreciate your concern and points, but I think it's time to move on and start to clean, the slate clean with our new Drain Commissioner.
I am looking at some different options that I've been hearing the last couple of months that would, I think is more transparent. There's a couple of different ways we can do some of these drains. Once I get rid of that, then we might be able to change some of them to a different type of a drain, where a lot more transparency and yet not just one person has the say in what's done. It's a, it's a board that has the say in what's done with them. So I'm looking at that option too.
Meet with Kent too and ask him some of his questions. Because I think he's got a pretty good handle on it. He met with us Ways and Means, he did a, laid out a good explanation.
I think that your, your, your question about revolving funds for Drain Commissioners is, is very pertinent. And I think that the next budget session, we need to start possibly looking at establishing a revolving fund for Drain Commissioners, when those can be pulled into the green to cover the $103 charges, et cetera. So, you know, let's, let's keep that in the back of our minds until the next budget session and maybe make that happen.
Well, I mean, I can be very, very clear on that. There, there might be some money or funds that need to be put in certain drains for maintenance or something like that. But starting in May, I met with the County Planner and I've also met with the County Surveyor. And the three of us are going to walk all these drains all night together and find out the, the size of them. First of all, who's in the, in the districts and whether or not they need to be actually county drained anymore or we can change them to one or the other, like just.
That's a recommendation that was given to the previous Drain Commissioner about four and a half years ago.
But we're talking, I talked with Rob, I talked with Pat about the County Surveyor.
Have you ever worked with the County Planner?
I'm pleased to see that you're forward thinking.
Yes, we're trying to get the opinion here.
I'll call the question.
All right. Call the roll, please.
Commissioner Batson? No. Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dats?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaquish?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Okay, moving on to other items from committee members. It's the sum total of not continuing to turn the shareholder share at 10:15 AM. We'll make a, make a motion to approve the minutes out of the way we.
We have a motion. Is there support for that?
All supporters.
Okay, we have motion support. All in favor of accepting the committee minutes?
Aye.
Those votes, motion carries. All right, we are on to personnel.
The Personnel Committee, Matt. Commissioner Bergstrom and Dats attended. I was not able to attend that meeting. We had Sheriff O'Hagan appear before the committee to state that Lieutenant Brian Gukowski has been appointed for the new Emergency Manager of Manistee County. Even though the Board indicated at the January County Board meeting that position could be effective immediately, Sheriff O'Hagan has not made the appointment effective yet because of the timing, the transition of personnel as well as the salary being unknown at that time. Ryan Gukowski's salary is at 51,563.20 at the sergeant's rate. Sheriff O'Hagan requested to pay grade nine, step eight, 20, 80 hours, full-time, at 55,955.38 for Lieutenant Gukowski, which is the previous Emergency Manager's salary. Sheriff O'Hagan stated that he wants to be able to promote him, promote within. To do that, the salary agreements between sheriff, undersheriff, lieutenant, and sergeant are not very much. If there is not a higher salary available, these deputies might as well stay in the union. Sheriff O'Hagan emphasized the responsibility and position of the Emergency Manager, which doesn't change because someone new is appointed. Lieutenant Gukowski has already signed up for PEM training. This was moved by Bergstrom, seconded by Dats, recommended the new Emergency Manager's salary be placed at grade nine, step eight, in the amount of 55,955.38 with an effective start date of February 13th, 2017.
Is there a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
Support. We have support. Any discussion?
I have a more general question. We've been making quite a few exceptions to the wage scale recently. And I'm wondering if we have, and most, you know, these have been with good reason. Do we have plans to reassess the wage scale sometime in the near future?
We've been discussing that for a number of years and having a hard time trying to come up with a cost-effective way to address some of the issues that continually rise. It's, it's tough to get everybody on the same page with it. It's, it's a work in progress and a very slow progress, to say the least.
I'm hoping that in Personnel, we'll be able to kind of look at the bigger picture and then work with Lisa and get things kind of on a path. Then once we've kind of, I mean, it starts with your job descriptions, your understanding of positions, and then you can do analysis in regards to other like positions. But if you don't know what people are doing or what their responsibilities hold, then it's hard to do comparison studies. So, and I think we have Notley involved too, so we have a lot of different moving pieces. But I think it started with just getting it all.
That's a good question. It is complex. And, you know, if you do this, it will have an adverse effect over here. And so it's trying to balance all that out, which is a great question. It's a tough, hopefully, challenge.
And if you don't do this, you have an adverse effect because there's no reason for anybody to rise into the, into the drain side.
What, what you really have here is, is not exceptions to our, to our plan. Our plan allows for, for this. For when you hire someone new, they start at a specific level. We know what that level is. But then you find out, let's say, that, that person won't take the job at certain. It allows that department supervisor or elected official to come before the Board and ask for some other considerations based on education or whatever. And that's, that, that process was followed. And that's what you have here before you. As far as the entire wage study, our, our wage classification system is, is, it probably, we talk about this at administrators' meetings all the time. A wage study statewide or, or in our counties our size would cost between $30 and $50 if we hired another Notley or Bill Rye or whoever to come in and do that. And I'm not sure that that's really worth it. I think our wage scale is, is pretty good. Where we have a problem is in our step system. And that's what Personnel Committee has been struggling with for a number of years. I am, I've been here 32 years. I'm still not at the top of the wage scale in my position. Mainly because it comes, goes from the time I was county, named County Controller, which was in the 90s. And I'm still not at the, at the top because it's a three-step, it's, it's nine steps and takes three years for each step. So technically, you don't ever get to the top of the wage scale until you get 27 years in a particular position. That's probably not right. And so, but to change that is very expensive. And so there's, this, the Personnel Committee's been discussing this for the last two or three years as to how we make the whole dog do something like that. So that, that's where our problem exists, more than the actual wage scale.
And I think that over time, Lisa's been trying to kind of educate, you know, even taking on the new position in the Personnel Committee now. You know, provide us that education, provide us this affirmation. And we all see where we, we run into, even the department heads see where they're running into conflicts with pay scales and stuff. So I think that, you know, as we work through this process, you know, like Tom said, you know, it's a step process. That's probably the biggest issue.
Thank you.
Clear call the roll, please.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dats?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaquish?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
The sheriff also requests a corrections technician position be upgraded to correction officer. Sheriff O'Hagan informed the committee that he is losing two corrections staff, maybe a third and another third, and so maybe four? Is that what I'm saying? Okay. Another retiring next year. The concept of correction techs was great, but the low wage does not attract quality applicants. And filling that position is difficult at $12.46 per hour. Sheriff O'Hagan asked that the tech position be upgraded to a corrections officer. Correction officer with by contract has a salary ranging at 15,29 per hour. There was concern of past information of hiring the correction tech to help the Camp Pudsey prisoners working at the Oaks and boarding it at the jail, then boarding them at the jail. That never materialized. As well as inmates that are now housed from Wexford County, which will be eliminated when the Wexford County Jail opens and low jail occupancy starts. The tech position is evolving into full-time correction officers, which wasn't the plan. Sheriff O'Hagan stated he needs something to entice people to come to work there and the low wage of the technicians is not enough. It appears that there is an overstaffing issue. He will address it. Moved by Bergstrom, seconded by Dats to recommend that the current corrections technician positions be filled as corrections officers and that the correction technician, technician position be left vacant.
So to kind of replace the technician.
But the technicians are basically moving into corrections.
Corrections job.
Well, what you have here is, you're not eliminating the technician position. You're eliminating, you're, you're, you're filling a vacant technician's position with a corrections officer, which is a little bit more expensive. But as the sheriff outlined, and he could probably explain to you even right now, it's not really going to cost us more money in the current budget because of the vacancies that are already there and, and the lower wage that a new techni, a new corrections officer starts at compared to someone that's been there 10 or 15 years, that kind of a thing.
Well, so when I was reading this, it's, it's saying that we're upgrading to, which would mean, the language I'm hearing, upgrading mean, meaning that we would be removing that tech position. But I hear you saying we're keeping tech positions. We're just posting a new position as a correction officer.
Leaving it vacant.
Yes.
And then moving on with those positions, turning them, the current staffing level will only be corrections officers. The technicians' positions will be left vacant.
Why keep them?
Well, they're union positions. They're union positions.
Correct. And, and in the future?
Just to back up, give you a little history. When we first started that, we wanted to find a way to get extra help at minimal cost to try to get their foot in the door. What we found out in doing that is, okay, we're paying them $12.50 an hour, but they're still doing correction officer work. Within a year, we still have to send them to the 160-hour training. They have to be trained. And so on its, on space, at first, well, we'll get them in the door. But what we started to do last year is we weeded one of those two additional techs up to a full-time correction officer. We were doing some things with money and managing money to find a way to pay for this. Now, I know Mr. Dats brought up, when this all started, we were going to have a state program. The Department of Corrections is virtual prisoner, where we would house their inmates, get so much money. That fell through. When that happened, as we took it upon ourselves to get with Wexford and other county entities, but Wexford is our main one right now, so we house Wexford inmates. And we've been doing that for, what, Tom, probably two years. Right now, we're averaging probably six or seven a month. It's been as high as 10. And when you figure roughly $35 a day, do the math, I mean, several thousand dollars a month. So we've had something in play. I don't want anybody to think that there was no money for this. In doing so, we, when I took over as sheriff, I walked into two people leaving. And I already knew one was going to be leaving. One went to the road commission, another one had 10 years in and he was kind of at the end of his career. But since then, planning the one who's going to retire a year from now, one just walked in my office last week and he's going to be leaving. So we started an interview process and we have some good candidates, some good local candidates. A couple of them work at the Baldwin Prison. They've only been there a year. They're from Manistee. They make roughly $15 an hour. And here I have this tech position and asking them if they can come for $12.50. So I started to crunch some numbers. And I, and I wasn't trying to be sneaky or anything, but I thought I'm losing two 10-year officers who are at the top of the scale. So the savings will be, and this is without benefits, the savings will be $25,000 a year just by starting someone new. So with benefits, I think Lisa crunched some numbers for me, and we're talking $32,000 with benefits. So if we can take eight of that, I can offer a corrections wage, a $15 an hour wage. We still save $25,000 because all this was budgeted. So I'm not really going over and above. I'm not, I just have to find a way to keep people here. And it's, when you lose three, and I, and we've had a couple of commissioners pay a visit to our facility, and I thank you for doing that, it's a tough job. They're making it a profession, which it should be. But when I have places and not to knock McDonald's or anything, paying 11 and 11 and a quarter, 11.50, this is tough. This is tough work. We're dealing with a lot of things on the inside, from mental health issues to other things that the state's trying to tackle and play with. It's no easy solution. It's not easy. So that's why I came. When I, when I started doing some of the figures, I thought, I'm not just trying to do away with the tech. But the way my cards were dealt, three people leaving, and I'm here to tell you, there's two more looking. One's looking to go to PCA and another one said when his kids graduate, he's done. And there's another 10-year officer. That hurts. Now, why are they leaving? So I want to do some exit interviews and really sit down and find out why. But I know what some of it is. Some of it, they can go other places and not have near the headache and, and make a decent wage. Some has to do with retirement. Retirements are changing, so some of my newer people can go elsewhere. So where we saved years ago by changing plans, this is the ripple effect later on. Sometimes not everybody changed with us and there's still some more competitive, better things. So it's a challenge. It really is a challenge. And I figured, well, now's the time, the timing's right to come in. And I have some local folks. I'm ready to offer some positions. We interviewed like seven. We had seven applicants for a corrections job. Actually, we gave 20 applicants, 25. And out of the seven, believe it or not, we have four or five pretty good candidates. Two for sure that I'm just thrilled. They're going to be quick plug-in plays and they are already got all the trainings. I'm not going to have to pay any money. And so when you look at what the county's still going to be saving, because again, they're not paying vacation time. They're not paying that, the wages, the move from $12.50 to $15 an hour. Knowing what's still coming within a year, some more people leaving, the time's right to do this.
So Sheriff O'Hagan, what, what I'm, what this really is saying is that you're, you're going to be down three corrections officers.
Yes.
You know, so you do need that help.
I'm down two right now.
Right.
But we're ready to plug one in next week to get started.
Good. And my only question is really, you know, and, and it doesn't matter. I mean, we put them in a union position, but it's like, is it a reality that we should have techs? You know, truly, when you get into that system, it's a tough.
When we started it, it was, we'll have them answer the phone. We'll have them take walk-ins. You know, it's a helper.
Right.
For $12.50 an hour, and if they like corrections, we can always, you know, try to move them forward. And again, at the time, that was a way to start, but times are changing a little bit too. And you can't always predict that. I didn't want to come standing before you a few years later and make everybody full-time corrections. But I mean, you deal with other things too. When we first started, some of the COs were like, well, you're just a tech. Well, that's kind of hard, you know, when, when these are people kind of doing the same work and we're training them to do the same thing. So.
Any other questions for Sheriff O'Hagan? Do we have a motion and support?
No, we don't.
We don't?
No, we don't.
Oh, okay. Is there?
I'll make the motion.
We have a motion.
Support it.
We have support. Any further questions? Clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Dats?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jaquish?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
We also had Mr. Dats recommended that Sheriff O'Hagan and our new Emergency Manager, Lieutenant Gukowski, meet with Oaks Warden to create a good working relationship and just get to know each other again.
We love that.
I have an update on the BS and AI Human Services Resources software. This is a gallery. Lisa's gallery reported that the contacts have been made with the BSNA on human resource software that has been approved for purchase with the housing grant monies. It has hopefully have the software installed and be trained in time for purchase. That's it.
Is there a motion to accept the minutes as presented? Do we have a motion and support?
Support.
Support. Favor of that? Kind of opposed, motion carries. Anything like that? Let's take a recess and we'll all, Ms. Julie in here to hopefully get the PowerPoint presentation going. She asked for that. Get a process. Julie would like to maybe get the PowerPoint presentation up. So I guess we'll let's recess and.
All right, it's twenty after all, call me back in the morning. And we have our Network Northwest presentation. With that, we'll turn it over.
All right, thank you very much. My name is Ted Erickson. I'm a regional planner with Network Northwest. So I appreciate you giving me a little bit of time on your agenda to give a presentation. Really appreciate that. I've got about fifteen slides. They'll be quite brief. But before I begin, I just wanted to say a little bit about Network Northwest, of course, with the Regional Planning Authority. Cover ten county region from Emmett County down to Musaki and then west over here to Manistee. We do a wide variety of regional planning initiatives, including transportation planning, particularly what I'm talking about today. We operate under, as far as transportation planning goes, we operate under an MDOT, an annual agreement. And the annual agreement covers broadly, falls into two categories, pavement and asset management and then federal and state program. And today, I'm only going to be talking about the pavement and asset management portion of our work plan. And broadly speaking, pavement and asset management program essentially breaks into four areas. Strategic approach, and what I mean by that is it's a statewide initiative in order to gather pavement rating data, but do it on a local level. Specific evaluation criteria that's used to rate pavement. And then the digital inventory is largely where the Regional Planning Authority comes into play is housing, the manager of the digital inventory, the data that's gathering. And then the last part is reporting. And in part, that's what I'm doing here today. In addition to going to each county and providing a brief presentation, we also have a full report of all ten counties' pavement ratings that we do. And I'm able to provide that on request. It's also on our website. And then in addition to that, we also submit the report to MDOT and TMC as well. So just starting off, what roads are rated? The roads that are on the federal system, so we're talking the MDOT trunk highways, the county primary roads as well as village and city primary roads. So roads that are not on the federal system is not rated. However, we can do those on a fee-for-service basis, that's just kind of false outside of our work plan of MDOT. But as far as the roads we do annually, in conjunction with our work plan through MDOT, are those roads that I just mentioned, the county primary, the city and village primary and state roads. So pavement, surface, evaluation and rate, you've probably heard me say Pazer, that's the acronym that we use. I'll talk about the process a little bit. It's, as I said, there's a specific criteria. The rating scale goes from one to ten and each integer has specific pavement characteristics or qualities related to each one, with one being the worst and ten being the best. I say window assessment. What I mean by that is that the process or the criteria is meant to be done from the cab of the vehicle. You know, we're not stopping and getting out and looking with a magnifying glass at different cracks in the roads, but it is intended to be done from the cab of a vehicle traveling at low speeds. How it's done is we're always driving in an MDOT vehicle. It's done in conjunction with MDOT, the road commission, TMC and the Regional Planning Authorities. And like I said, MDOT's always driving, road commission's always in the front seat, is kind of the primary raider. And then the Regional Planning Authority, we're in the backseat. We've got the laptop, we've got the software called Roadsoft and it has kind of a real-time GIS mapping system. And so we're able to follow along. We've got a GPS on the top of the vehicle that kind of shows us where we're at and we're able to put in the specific rating criteria and the data for every road segment that we're on. So it's a pretty neat, pretty neat, efficient system. And so I've already kind of talked about the laptop data collector. So we aggregate that data, not only for the county, but the region, and then we submit that to the state as well. Got a couple examples. As I said, the criteria, the rating scale goes from one to ten and there's specific characteristics associated with each integer, but just for the presentation purposes, I've kind of broken into three main categories. And by the way, these pictures are not necessarily from Manistee County or necessarily from the region, they're just examples of pavement. But obviously, we don't need really a scale to assess if this road's in poor quality, but we do adhere to the rating system quite closely. And so here you can see, you know, ratings one through four, generally in the poor condition. What you're looking for here is you're seeing any crack in the wheel path. That's immediately going to tell you it's a four or below. It tells you there's structural deficiencies. Here, I'm not actually seeing the crack in the wheel, well, a little bit, but primarily there's a large center line crack and sets of scaling. Other things that are going to put it in that poor category, the three, two and one, is what we call alligator cracks, that block cracking, grass is two about a foot, so you've got a block cracks about a foot, one square foot wide. It looks like an alligator stance, called alligator crack.
We've started to pass it a few times. Was it?
Yeah, I don't know, this is maybe.
Looks like skid paving to me, like a portion of it. And it's very thin, starting to come off of the surface below.
Maybe it's moist soils or something like that.
Yeah, it could be, it could be a number of reasons. And again, I don't know exactly, this could be from elsewhere in the nation too, this is just an example. I don't think it's from the region, to be honest. The next kind of broad category, fairs five to seven. These roads, you're starting to see, especially have some transverse cracks, going all the way across the road, but you're also starting to see some secondary cracking. And starting, this is what we would call block cracking, you know, well, three to five foot segments of pavement cracks. And, you know, there's various treatments associated with each rating scale. Something like this, you see that the crack seal that's been obviously been done or something like a seal to kind of preserve the life of that roadway. This is the main category of, not only in here in the county, but also region-wide, we've seen most of the roads rated in this category. And then from eight to ten, probably considered to be good condition. Like I said, this scale does break it down further, but for presentation purposes, basically it's true dog category. When a road is newly constructed, it is eligible to be a ten for only one year. After that one year, even if it looks like this road, technically is not eligible to be rated a ten, after one year has to be a nine and below. And then the rating scale for an eight, you know, you can start to see some transverse cracks, but they're forty feet apart or more, so occasional transverse cracks, but generally in very good condition. So what this slide is showing is kind of the contrast between the worst-first approach and a mix of fixes approach. So it's not necessarily always the best choice to, or I guess rarely is the best choice, to invest in the worst roads first. A lot of times, you're going to want to take a look at the roads that are in the five to seven category and do a mix of fixes and kind of preserve those roadways and you're going to be able to extend the life of those roadways. And that's what these different graphs are showing, is the value of different approaches through a mix of fixes versus the worst-first approach. So this is region-wide. You can also see this same scale on the map, just a smaller version there. But like I said, you've got about a third of the roads in poor condition. This again, this is region-wide, this includes the state trunk lines, county primaries, city and village primaries as well. But about a third in poor condition, forty, now it's about forty percent, but forty-five to forty percent in fair category and twenty-five percent or poorer than in good condition.
So over five years, that's the average. Does this ever change? I mean, is there always a percentage of at thirty or around thirty that stays in that poor condition?
Yeah, I mean, that's, this is generally, and you know, that's just what funding levels are at, this is typically what we're seeing. You know, again, this is a ten-county average and that's consistent, you know, basically statewide as well. And, you know, as you can see, there's some very, some minor fluctuation, but typically it's pretty constant. This is the same information, just displayed graphically or geographically, I should say. Again, you're seeing about twenty-seven percent good, forty-one percent fair, one third for. Here you can see by jurisdiction, all of those numbers that would just be sixty-three percent are county primary, thirty-three percent are state trunk line and four percent are city and village. And so you can see the different percentages there for each jurisdiction. This map shows change from year over year, so this is from 2015 to 2016. Twenty-eight percent of the roads received a lower rating, a decrease in rating. Fifty-nine percent had no change. And then thirteen percent improved. And of course, they can only improve if there's been a treatment or project done on those roads.
I'm sure you want a decrease.
Twice a decrease for approved.
I think that's the nature of the Gordianado transportation, at this point, the funding levels being the way they are. Just trying to keep, continue to maintain and preserve the roadways.
Well, you brought up funding levels, there's new legislation, you're paying more for gas and you're also paying more for registrations. How much are you thinking you're going to see in our region?
As far as like the gas tax?
Yeah.
You know, I don't know what the future of that is. One thing I can say about the gas tax, I know with vehicles getting more fuel efficient, the purchasing power of the gas tax is certainly decreasing. So the value of those dollars, the gas tax, don't go as far.
Current road commission's going to see over eight hundred thousand dollars. Is it this or next fiscal year, Mark?
They've estimated, basically, this fiscal year roughly about eight hundred thousand in additional, you know, revenue from the gas tax and vehicle registration fees. Now, in perspective, if you use that directly to like doing roadwork or something, that's enough to grind up and repave three miles of road, basically. But I believe they estimate by 2021, we might be receiving roughly another two point five million in revenue. Now, our current gas tax revenue is roughly about three point eight or three point nine million, which is our primary source of funding. Now, based on the federal aid, and I'll add, you know, once Ted has done, you know, some of the, you know, the county, the stuff that we're doing and the conditions and that. But in perspective, just on the federal aid, roads that are rated, which are not, they're like two hundred and nine miles of our county primary, which we have over two hundred and fifty miles, some are rated, are actually like major collectors that are rated each year, then there's minor collector, primary roads that are not rated, but probably just out of the two hundred and nine miles, you have basically fifty miles that could be overlaid with blacktop or ground up and repaved. So if you figure fifty miles times two hundred and fifty to three hundred thousand a mile, you're talking about a lot of money. You know, so there's a lot of needs, at least the legislators, you know, pass some legislation so we're kind of heading in the right direction. You know, if it's the amount they should have obtained to try to fix the system, it isn't. You know, industry was figuring you need over two billion annually for the statewide per year. And I think the legislator has passed legislation, it was roughly one point two billion. And some of that money comes from the general fund. But, you know, we will see at least, you know, increases in the next number of years. And I think by 2021, the gas tax is going to be indexed to inflation, because the last time they raised the gas tax was twenty years ago in nineteen ninety-seven, it was a fixed nineteen cents per gallon. So when the gas prices went up, people, you know, drive less and then all the other costs, you know, basically went up, so. But yeah, we will be seeing an increase eventually, but that gas tax can be used for doing projects, obviously, if we have a lot of equipment needs, you know, stuff of that nature, so, you know, routine maintenance.
So it's 2021 before you see some really significant ones?
That's correct. Yeah, they're, it's basically, they're kind of, I think, stepping into it. I think that's how the legislation was. And I think part of it, at least, you know, from what I think we've been told, is that you don't even have like contractors and that or engineers geared up for all of a sudden doing all these projects. I mean, you know, a lot of contractors over the years, due to lack of funding, you know, they don't have the proper staffing levels. You know, you've got paving contractors that, you know, just like the corrections, you know, it's hard to get good qualified people. So I think, from what I understand, that was kind of their idea, kind of, you know, step increase on the, you know, the funding.
Is there much R and D going on, new materials that might last longer? Is there anything going on in there?
I mean, you know, MDOT does a lot of research all the time. There's many different things that are tried, you know, but when it comes down to it, you know, I'm sure, you know, I mean, most of the materials, obviously, we use like on paving projects now, it basically meets the MDOT specifications. They've spent a ton of money on, you know, research and development, you know, different paving mixtures, you name it, so.
Actually, do they use polymers or something for a longer period of time?
Well, I think actually some of the blacktop mixes include, you know, different polymers, you name it. I mean, there's different treatments, but it all depends on the, you know, the roadway, your base conditions, you name it. You know, every section of road, soils, conditions, depending on where you are in the county. You know, if you've got well-drained soils, you've got a good base, you're going to get better service life. If you get in areas that have clay and then you have to make sure you have a good sand base and gravel base, you know, there's a lot of factors that you deal with. Your normal blacktop pavement, your general service life for like a brand-new blacktop is say fifteen to twenty years. So it's, you know, there's a lot of, I mean, as far as looking at, I mean, obviously down in urban areas, when they build a concrete pavement in a, you know, total urbanized area, you know, they're going to have more service life for a concrete pavement as compared to, you know, blacktop pavement. But and then what they look at is lifecycle cost analysis. You put a concrete pavement down many years down the road, it's more expensive to rehabilitate a concrete pavement as compared to, you know, blacktop pavement, so.
Yeah, they're going to be dealing with heavier traffic too.
Right, right. So up here, I mean, majority of our roads, other than some of the state trunk line, is basically, you know, blacktop pavement, you know, here and, you know, going through Manistee on US thirty-one, you know, you have concrete, you know, in different areas, so.
So expensive.
Yeah, we did, we are seeing eight hundred thousand dollars every year from 2021 from Memphis.
When we increases each year, there's like step increases from this year on out.
And that will be indexed to inflation. So we did see the current increase in gas tax go up, as we all have seen, and as you mentioned, your registration fees. The money's starting to come in, it's going to take a while to see some results. Ted?
Thanks, man. Really, this is my last slide. I'll just leave the map up here, but yeah, I'm happy to answer any questions or happy to continue the conversation if you want to reach out. My contact information's on the next slide. But yeah, if required, if you want me to. turns, if you want me to turn it over to you, or if you have other, other things you have.
I did have a question, one of the things that I noticed in the report that you submitted is that um some of the counties, um at, Manistee County looks like it's about in the middle of our region, as far as road conditions go, um what, do you know what the counties at the top are doing differently to maintain, what do they have in terms of their funding that's different?
Well, and I, and I used to have a slide in here that kind of showed um some of the, some of the highlights, and I know, um, Benzie County had, I think theirs had forty percent into good category, and I, I think they had a millage increase.
They have a county millage?
They also, they have a road of millage?
Yeah, and so, I mean, I think, you know, when you see that come into place, you see those numbers boost, uh but I don't know, Mark, you could probably talk.
Yeah, I mean, here, I mean, here in Michigan, I think there's, I believe, like twenty-eight counties that have a uh countywide millage, like Grant Travers, for example, they, they passed one within the last, you know, five years, and they do a lot of work, uh, uh, Benzie has, I believe, you know, they have a millage, but it's a, you know, a smaller, smaller millage, so along with an increase, obviously, in the gas tax and, you know, legislation, it's uh, you know, when you do have a millage, you know, in place, that does help you actually get more work completed. Uh, you know, we do have here in Manistee County, we have, you know, just three townships that have a uh township millage, and they work with road commission on the cost share, O'Nekama, of course, they've had millage, uh, you know, for a number of years, and there's been a lot of, you know, projects done, you know, Brown Township has a small millage along with Arcadia Township. So along with the legislation in Lansing, I mean, it is always, you know, beneficial, I mean, whatever, I mean, because of the condition of the, the roads, I mean, this is only the paved roads, I mean, we're not even talking about the dirt and gravel roads, there's a lot of needs, I mean, you know, millage money definitely helps because you can go further, you know, if you get any improvements, you know, completed.
Thank you.
Yeah. Mark, do you need the, this at all?
Uh, I just wanted, I'm just gonna mention a few things.
Yeah, you, you don't need this, the overhead.
Oh, not necessarily, no, I'm sorry, no, no, just, I'm giving you some, uh, basically, actually, eleven-by-seventeen copy of the same map that I've already saved from uh, from TAD, Networks Northwest, and I just added some information on it. The, what I just wanted to mention, as far as the uh, the county roads go, uh, like TAD had mentioned, basically, what is rated with Pazer on an annual basis is what they call federal aid, uh, federal aid eligible paved roads here in the county, and then also they work with the city on rating their primary roads, you know, that's pretty much done on an annual basis, like here on our county roads, we have one person from the road commission, and I think TAD's been doing it the last year or so, and then basically a person from MDOT, we drive down the road, everybody's been trained with, you know, looking at the condition of the roads and, you know, what the rating system is, and on the county certified roads, we basically rate every year two-hundred-and-nine miles, okay? And I just wanted to mention, that is not all of the county paved primary roads, okay? And what it is, there's national functional classification through MDOT, where some of the county primary roads that are rated as being major collectors, and that's what you're seeing on the map, and then there's other primary roads that are what they call minor collectors, okay, they have kind of limited federal aid eligibility. Now, you know, for example, some that are primary roads that are not rated, I mean, we're, we're hoping this year, next year, in fact, uh, two of our supervisors will be going to a Pazer training this year, it's an annual thing, I've been through it myself, I've, you know, rated the roads myself, but, you know, basically I have, you know, staff do it along with MDOT Networks Northwest, but some of the roads, for example, that are still primary and not rated each year, at least over the last many years, would be like Big Four, you know, north of nine mile over to the county line, which is in very, very poor condition, uh, you know, Chief Road, uh, Udel Hills Road, uh, Morella Road, you know, stuff like that, just for example, but we basically have like roughly fifty-seven miles of other county primary roads that are not rated each year, okay? And then also, we have like in the handout that I gave you, uh, we have approximately a hundred eighty-six miles of county local paved roads, and like I said, we're, we're hoping to basically rate those this year, next year, and that's something we'd have to work out with Networks Northwest, because we do not get reimbursed for it, so it's something that, you know, we basically have to pay for ourselves, you know, the time and everything, and pay for them to assist us unless we're able to get some type of funding through asset management, but, you know, my gut reaction on the local paved road system and the rest of the county primary, the condition is probably equal, if not worse, than what these were rated. I know there is one spreadsheet that I've given you previously, this document here, we kind of developed this, it's, it's based on those actual ratings for the county paved primary federal aid roads. The average for the two-hundred-nine miles is like a five-point-four, which is basically fair condition, so it's pretty likely that direct, especially like taking, you know, call it Big Four, you know, some of these other roads, that's gonna be tip the other direction, and then you get in the local road system, you know, it's ten to one, I'm just guessing, the local paved roads might be four to five, you know, right in that area, so.
So when you put this together, are you, so this will be your, kind of your roadmap for, you know, repairs and roads to keep an eye on, but it's like, with the idea that we have to sustain the ones that are five through seven, you know, it's, it sounds like we, will we ever get out of the hole?
Well, you know, generally, like, say, through our task force, we receive approximately, like the federal, what they call STP funds, we receive, you know, about four-hundred-and-fifty thousand a year, and then the state category D funds, about eighty, eighty-seven thousand, okay, so that's enough to do a mile or so of road. Now, with the increased funding, you know, see, we're hoping also, obviously, to, you know, start working on more projects, but yeah, there's definitely a lot of needs, you know, needs here, that, uh, you know, we're, at least with the increased funding, the legislation, I mean, that definitely helps, you know, because, you know, I believe, obviously, if the gas tax wasn't increased in the last twenty years and all the other costs, well, the price of blacktop and materials, et cetera, you know, it's really tough, I, I think we can head in the right direction, I mean, it's gonna take a period of time.
So I'm not, I'm not sure if you're, if you have a, a static um type of line item, sorry, like, this has been a nice winter, uh, so you probably haven't spent as much in salt and ice, or salt and sand, so we've, we've had to move that around?
Yeah, I mean, we, well, yeah, I mean, that's, that's basically in our, in our funding, so if we use less funds, you know, salt or, you know, labor and that, like right now, obviously, in the wintertime, this, this type of weather, we have all the people out still patching potholes, cutting trees, et cetera, do we have the big trucks out? No. Tomorrow and Thursday, we're gonna pretty likely have the big trucks out, blading some of these dirt gravel roads. We were gonna do it starting this morning, but obviously with the rain, you know, the heavy rain, we're not, I mean, it's, probably, the roads are pretty much a mess, so I think, based on the weather forecast, we'll still have trucks out, but, and it depends on the type of event and when you, when you get the event, you know, we have had some times where you have, obviously, you know, snow or freezing rain on a weekend where you have, you know, basically have a partial crew out on overtime. But I think, yeah, obviously, this is less mild than the last few winters, winter's not totally done, winter's supposed to be coming back this weekend, but I, but I think, I mean, at least with the increased funding, we're heading in the right direction, and we do use, excuse me, from a, a planning standpoint, we use these Pazer ratings all the time, you know, we take a look at them, see what the needs are in the county, and then when you have limited funds, obviously, you know, you, you can only kind of identify, well, this, this section should be, you know, we'll try to improve this section this year. We work with the townships, uh, I know I've driven, looking at the last few years, pretty much all of the, O'Nekama Township paved roads and some of the other townships, you know, because they wanna do some projects, so we try to give them some feedback, uh, and then they can kind of make their decision, you know, they've got the cost share with us, you know, what projects they would like to do on an annual basis, so. But that way, when we at least get the local paved roads done, as far as the Pazer, Pazer rating, that'll give us a, you know, I mean, that's gonna show us pretty much the full picture of the paved road system. Gravel and dirt, that's a whole different story, you know, because like I said, on, on this handout, on, on the first page, I mean, we basically have five-hundred-and-ninety-three miles of uh unpaved roads, which are pretty much dirt and gravel roads, there's now, out of that amount, there's like roughly a hundred and ninety-seven miles that are seasonal roads that are pretty much like two tracks, so you have, you know, figuring roughly four-hundred miles of dirt gravel roads that are not plowed during the wintertime, you know, that, you know, we're talking about the paved road conditions because you wanna try to maintain what you have, but also you have many, many miles of gravel roads that, dirt and gravel roads that definitely need, need work, so.
With the additional funding um from the state, what sort of a timeframe are you looking at to try and get um most of the roads up to at least a fair rating, so, you know, we're looking at, you know, ten percent or less um in that poor category?
Haven't you been able, you know, I mean, it's pretty hard to project something like that because you have so many needs, uh, it's, yeah, I mean, like I said, we have many, many miles, probably, like I said, if you have roughly fifty miles, it could be on, just on the ones that were rated, that could be overlaid with blacktop or, or crushed up and repaved, I mean, you were talking, you could need fifteen million just to do that, and that doesn't even include the rest of the primaries, local paved roads, so we don't really have a, a timeline, I, I'd hate to even try to put a timeline on it because it all depends on, you know, the uh, the conditions of the roads, you know, the treatments, uh contractor, you know, prices, you know, stuff of that nature. You know, and I would envision too, with the increased funding, I might as say, like on blacktop, you know, the prices are supposed to be, you know, supposedly pretty decent this year. Now, eventually, you know, with the construction industry, I mean, you know, it's very likely, because a lot of these contractors have pretty much, you know, starved for a number of years because of lack of adequate funding, you know, their prices are gonna, just like anything, give them a tendency of going up too, so. But yeah, it's just really hard to project, you know, on, on that map that I've given you, I, I just showed basically what roads were done after the Pazer ratings, like obviously Seaman Road was totally ground up and redone down in Norman Township, uh, we do have some major work, like I said, on, on River Road, uh, like a little over nine miles from Malark to High Bridge, uh, that's gonna be more or less like a pressure, preservation treatment. We're doing Cotton Suda Road, you know, this year, finally, and that's with some small urban funding, so we, you know, we do have some things, you know, going on, you know, this year that will, you know, take care of some of these situations, so.
Mark, we had a survey that was done at the regional summit last year, can you touch on that just briefly, where is that at, if anything, that's regarding, Meg's question in regard to county, uh, county millage for roads?
Well, I, I know there was the survey that was issued during the regional summit, and we did get the information back, and I think it, one of the prior board, county board meetings, I did provide you kind of a summary of that, and I, you know, I think that's about as far as it's gone at this point of time. Obviously, any, if there was any, uh, like for countywide millage, anything of that nature, it needs county board approval, and it would have to be a, you know, a big educational process, you know, for, you know, basically, you know, the pub, general public and everybody else. Yeah, so that's something.
Right, now, one mill will deliver a little over half a million dollars in rebuilt construction, that's, that's a drop in the bucket.
Yeah. Yeah, I know we had just some, like I said, some rough estimates when we, I think, uh, sent out the question there, so.
How come on River Road, you got one section of a mile or so that's gravel, what happened there?
On River?
Yep, when you go around by the airport, you go, River Road, then you go.
There was four tenths, that's been paved.
Oh, that was all, that's all paved now?
That's all paved.
When did you do that, last fall?
This, this, uh.
To be redone.
Last summer, yeah.
Okay, 'cause I remember driving out last year, there were holes, one section, it wasn't done.
Well, we gotta drive to it sometime soon, because it was totally late, late last summer, it was totally reconstructed.
More tenths of a mile.
The only, yeah, the only, and that was with, actually, we had cost share with two townships, Brown and Manistee, uh, the tribe, and then the road commission, so, it's, it's the last remaining segment of the whole River Road system, so.
Another question.
Yes, sir.
On the, that was Northwest, it shows Manistee, Wexford and Masaki.
Yep.
Do the three of you team up for the bigger projects?
Well, that would be what they call the rural task force ten, ten B, and see how it's broken out, all of like our federal and state money, like the federal STP, and then the state category D money, which can only be used on all season, excuse me, all season roads that are not restricted during the springtime. We basically have meetings throughout the year, the funding goes through, and Networks Northwest is involved with that, that federal and state money goes through the task force, and we meet and basically, you know, the three counties in the county transit basically meet and approve the projects on a, you know, throughout the year.
I thought that's not worth it.
Yeah, so we pretty much, like, as far as road commission goes, we look at our entire federal aid uh county system, and kind of look at, well, what would be a good project to do each year, you know, just like when we did Seaman Road, we took a look at the whole system, I mean, you could, you know, there's some in a real bad condition, it's like, you know, you gotta use your best judgment that, you know, this project should be done this year, and, but yeah, we do meet at least probably three, four times a year.
Seems to me that probably most of the money should go, or does go, maybe, to just preserving the paved roads that are out there, because if they start to, you're gonna have a more expensive problem, so.
Yeah, well, there's, you know, what they've talked about, I think, you know, the mix of fixes, you know, because you have some roads right now that might be rated as being like a Pazer three, which is, you know, poor condition, which maybe you can extend the service life, maybe six years or so, if you do blacktop wedging and fill in like rutted areas, and then put a chip seal over it, and then you have other roads, like, good part like Cotton Suda or Seaman Road, are probably rated as being a two, which is very poor condition, it's, that type of condition, you don't wanna just try to band-aid it, uh, you wanna basically totally grind it up and repave it, but you have to look at, you know, the entire system, well, is there some of these roads you can blacktop wedging and chip seal to extend the service life, or do you gotta go with the other treatment where you gotta spend two-hundred-fifty to three-hundred thousand a mile, so that's a part of our planning we do all the time, so.
Ted, I've got a challenge for you with Networks Northwest, Senator Colbeck Wayne County, uh, he used to work at Massaw, he's an engineer, and you say a rocket scientist, he's a senator down out of Wayne County, as I stated, uh, he had a solution in regard to trying to extend the lives, it costs a little bit more upfront, but it added two to three times the life of the roads, it was a simple additive, you know, it's, he's kind of been banging his head against the wall in Lansing, I know that, but he does have some different thoughts in regard to it. If it's something a region could possibly grab a hold of and try to push it, it may be a benefit, because if, if it did cost you ten to fifteen percent more per road, but you got that much more life out of it, you can start catching up, because right now, we aren't catching up, and all we just do is keep throwing more money at everything.
Look into it.
One other thing, uh, since I'm not gonna be able to attend the next road commission meeting, and I am going to make this a public story, because there's a need for it, there's a uh concern that I have been involved in some degree in regards to contract negotiations at the road commission, because they do not have a contract, I've asked the chairman one time, where are they at in regard to it, and he said they believe, I believe the answer was they were at fact finding, that's the only questions I've had behind the scenes or in front of the scenes, I have absolutely zero, I have no interest in getting involved in contract negotiations, it's nothing for me to do, I have no vote as a liaison to the road commission, and since I'm not gonna be able at, be at the next road commission meeting, I want to say this publicly now, in front of everyone, I've had zero involvement, nor do I intend to have. I've had zero involvement, nor do I intend to have any involvement in that. It's, it's not my place, so.
Yeah, I could say that's absolute fact, I don't know where that rumor comes from, but.
Well, it's been surfacing more than, so I want to, I want to put it to rest the best I can, and I would, I would do it at the next road commission meeting, I will not be there, so.
Okay.
But it's just like what they did to me, I'm directed to the library to work on mine. I wish I got a little more money.
All right.
Mark, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ted.
All right, well, let's move on to that topic.
You got it?
Twenty-four days.
Yep. We met on February 10th at two o'clock, and Margaret and Mark and myself was there. First item on the agenda was a twenty-seventeen desktop PC replacement. Gordon, the phone number of the county IT department indicated that he sent out an RFP for twenty-six desktops. To eight vendors, you received four correspondence in return, which you intend to save. This is the annual desktop PC rotation replacement. Twenty PCs were originally identified during budget time, but six more PCs have been identified needing replacement. With the low bid on this project still comes in near eighteen thousand dollars, that was budgeted. In the past, HP equipment has usually been bought. However, Dell is trying to reestablish relationships with the consumer, and they have come in with the low bid. There was some concern about local servers and non-site warranty and response time. Gordon indicated that the desktops usually had very low downtime. This is catastrophic. The three other vendor bids were HP equipment, which all are very comparable. It was noted that if the county buys from Dell this year, as low bid, they're certain of service problems, the county will not buy them in the future. Moved by Burkestom, seconded by Schmidt, to recommend the approval of the low bid from Dell Inc. for replacements of twenty-six Dell desktop PCs in the amount of eighteen thousand two hundred fifty-seven dollars and ninety-eight cents to be paid from the technology budget and the general fund. And I'll make that motion.
I'll support it.
Motion supported, any discussion?
Is Delta one that's having problems with their battery?
That was a nice change, you already concerned we had it all with service. Yeah, service, and like I said, for this amount of money, we budget HP and they come in like eighteen too. So we figure we try it, if we don't get any good service, we don't go back.
It's a lot, a lot of PCs.
Well, that's no, this is our normal replacement.
Tom, what do we do with the old ones? We sell those, or what do we do with them?
Yeah, sometimes. Usually Gordon comes up with some proposal to either sell them to employees or put them out for bid to the public, the public's, usually, sometimes they're shot, and they're not. What have we done in the last?
Yeah, usually, sometimes we sell them if they're a month is of them, or he'll rotate them to like, some of the offices have computers at their front counters, and those are generally the old bare bone, you know, that they just need one program to operate, so he will also rotate those in and get the old ones out, and then most of the time, those old dinosaurs are just, there's nothing you can do with them, so.
But we recycle, we don't.
Right, right, right. Yeah, no, no, no.
Sarah would never allow us to do that.
Occasionally, we'll have a yard sale. We've done that in the past.
Actually, we've got, Bruce has been after me, we've got a ton of, we've got a whole office back there, my Bruce's office, that's filled with all kinds of old desks and different things, and we were talking about having a garage sales maybe in the courthouse here, but we found out that the sheriff's department is going to have an auction this spring, they get rid of bikes and things that they have, and we're going to maybe participate in that. It'd be a little bit of work to get some of our stuff out there, but it's better than us trying to have one.
I'm going to volunteer my favor.
Well, as many times you've asked, just take a long election.
Sure. All right, we had a motion in support, any further discussion? Okay, hearing none, clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Gutman?
Yes.
Okay, reorganized surveillance equipment. Gordon presented a quotation from Simplex to clean up and reorganize and rewire the surveillance equipment closet at the jail, which is an appendix D. Simplex is under contract with the county and therefore has to do the work. This rewiring is over the scope of the contract, which is a bid of two thousand, twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Concern was voiced over the amount of time the events committed by the art commission. Gordon will work with the sheriff and the jail administrator to minimize the downtime of the vital surveillance area. Moved by Burkestom, seconded by Batson, to recommend approval of the quotation from Simplex in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars, reorganize and rewire the surveillance equipment at the jail.
It was up to, up to, yeah.
Yep, yep, up to, yeah, we went up to twenty-five.
I'm going to give a motion, sure.
Okay, motion.
I'll second.
We have support, any further questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Okay, reorganized surveillance equipment. Gordon presented a quotation from Simplex to clean up and reorganize and rewire the surveillance equipment closet at the jail, which is an appendix D. Simplex is under contract with the county and therefore has to do the work. This rewiring is over the scope of the contract, which is a bid of two thousand, twenty-five dollars and fourteen cents. Concern was voiced over the amount of time the events committed by the art commission. Gordon will work with the sheriff and the jail administrator to minimize the downtime of the vital surveillance area. Moved by Burkestom, seconded by Batson, to recommend approval of the quotation from Simplex in the amount of two thousand five hundred dollars, reorganize and rewire the surveillance equipment at the jail.
It was up to, up to, yeah.
Yep, yep, up to, yeah, we went up to twenty-five.
I'm going to give a motion, sure.
Okay, motion.
I'll second.
We have support, any further questions? Hearing none, clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Goodman?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Just to know, we upped it to twenty-five hundred, that extra seventy-five dollars, in case there might have been a little problem, or was it that much? Okay.
Is that from the capital improvement fund? I didn't know of that, because it wasn't really said, so I didn't know.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah, probably, because it wasn't in the technology budget.
Can I add that to the motion?
Yes, yes.
Just can I think, can you pronounce, maybe?
Okay, you got it, Joe? Okay. Renewal of the Panasonic support for the sheriff's patrol cars. The renewal of the Panasonic support for sheriff's patrol cars is needed. This is an annual maintenance contract for soft organ patrol cars, which is in the appendix C. Moved by Batson, seconded by Burkestom, to recommend the approval of the annual maintenance contract for the Panasonic support software for the sheriff's patrol cars, the amount of two thousand eighty-eight dollars and seventy-two cents. Now, that actually was in the budget, because that's the annual contract. Greg, Tom?
Yes.
I'll make that motion.
Second. Okay, we have a motion in support, any further discussion? Clerk call the roll, please.
Commissioner Schaefer?
Yes.
Commissioner Batson?
Yes.
Commissioner Bergstrom?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Jakus?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
And then we set up the technology meeting scheduled for twenty-seventeen, and third items members. Oh, this one here is kind of important. The other items were committee members. Tom reminded all that the surveillance cameras project in Corals will be addressed soon, as two grants have been received for the system, one grant from the Manistee Revenue Sharing Board, and a grant from MMRMA, which has to be completed and built by the end of May twenty-seventeen. So this board, there's no action at this time, just a heads up. Bruce is out getting the bids on this, and it might move kind of fast over, go lose some money.
What's the value, how much is that again, Bruce, two grants?
Well, it depends on what cost comes in. It's going to be no more than fifty percent of the, or around fifty percent of the total cost. We've had all kinds of estimates, you know, when we first estimated this, this is about a seventy-five, fifty thousand dollar project, but I think it might be a little less than that now, based on some new information we had, so.
So the grants will pick up half of it?
At least half, at least half.
And Tom doesn't want to use words, so he wants us to use that money.
The revenue sharing grant isn't so much, what I'm worried about is the MMR main one, has to be completed by May, the end of May.
Yeah, what's holding it up?
Well, just the process.
Okay, if you're getting bids right now.
Let's expedite.
Bruce was supposed to have some maybe.
You'll probably be making a decision at your March, or technology meeting, or making a recommendation at the March technology meeting for whoever the vendor is.
It's out for bids right now.
Yep.
I'll make the motion to accept technology report.
Second.
We have support, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. All right, the next one on our list is going to be the joint court. Meeting was held Thursday, February sixteen, three p.m. It is on the desk. And the biggest part of the, was in two parts. It was a motion by Walter House, seconded by Schmidt, to approve the joint court committee meeting minutes, that was one part, and that's the minded. Discussion in regard to, oh, let's see, deputy court administrator's position, and it's gone through the not least studies, and we've already acted on as a board, and this is something that we made a motion in support on from a joint committee, so Commissioner Walter House and Garland could take it back to their board with that recommendation. Again, this is something we've already adopted, our board, I believe, at our last meeting, if I wasn't correct, Lisa. So that's what this, this motion was on, it's not something we have to act on. And then the next biggest part of the meeting, we spent a great deal of time in discussion, as we already have touched on it here, and some update of the video recording system, what's going on throughout the court system, and we're going to have a personnel committee meeting, I believe it's the tenth, if I'm not mistaken, or is it the twelfth?
Tenth, at two, two o'clock.
Two o'clock. We're going to discuss, try to figure out compensation levels for whoever is going to be doing that for the court system, and right now, it's looked like it's going to be done through Jill's, the clerk's office, and again, we're just, we, it's a work in progress. And then we scheduled the meetings for the rest of the month, or the rest of the year, I should say. And that is the long and short of our meeting. Spent a lot of time there, but that's, that's the short version of what we've done.
Basically, most everything for vendors is correct.
Yeah. So if that, if there's any questions, motion would be in order to accept the.
I'll make the motion to accept the joint court report.
Right, we have motion, we have support.
Second.
Excuse me. Okay, we have a motion in support to accept the joint Manistee Benzy Court Committee meeting minutes. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries. Thank you. Now we are on to the regional summit.
Isn't there another event here too, or do we need to look at those?
No, no, that's the, that's the minutes probably for the previous.
Those have been from August.
It'll be on February third. About the only thing that we actually locked in for this upcoming regional summit was the location, it will be in Strongton Township this year, and we were in hopes that the county commissioners present today would have thought about what they would like to bring to the forefront, potent subjects, or possible consideration for the regional summit. If we had those in the form, that'd be nice, we could pass them on, but if not, we need to communicate those. Well, there's, there's one thing in particular, I see it as a county, tighter county issue, there's, since we've had our strategic plan review, I've started the dialogue in regard to pursuing county zoning. I've had a meeting with Tamara and Rob in regard to that, and also, Tom was involved in that, so far, the response that I've had in talking to the different peoples throughout the county has been quite positive, very, very limited negative, to be honest about it. One person I could actually point to that had any, any negative comments on it in regard at all. I think something I've talked to Rob and Tamara about is, and also Nipper, is trying to get on the MTA meeting, you know, the dinner meeting, that's very well attended in May, that's held up in Bear Lake, but I also think it's something that we ought to probably look at possibly putting on the agenda for the regional summit, because that's all another well-attended meeting. It's not something that's going to happen overnight, but we need to have as much open dialogue as we can, if it's something we're going to pursue. Rob, Rob, Rob and Tamara are going to be meeting with Mason County, because they do have county zoning, with the exception of three townships. So we'll see where, we'll see where it goes, but.
Pretty good one for the copy.
That's us, that's my one suggestion.
You know, we've, we've had.
I was going to ask, did the land bake or something? We will know this place.
Might be in place by then.
Right, and we look for things that enlighten, you know, that most people don't understand. As an example, PCA. We've had PCA in there, they come in and explain what they do, and the economic impact of PCA, et cetera. Morton Salt is, is one of the things that we thought possibly would be, fill that slot. We always have the. I thought it was Morton, did we have?
Morton Salt was there before, because he told about the injection laws.
Yeah.
All wrong, I see.
Very, very. Then we've had the museum, that, that's, that's pretty much a given, if we go back to subject matter, blocks, the museum will be there. We had the forum last year, where we had the breakout sessions, et cetera. We wanted to go back to original format again, so if you've got something like we discussed, we'll, we'll bring it up at the next regional summit. Does anybody else have something?
Yeah, I think when, when we have those topics too, then we have to look at the amount of time that we have available too. So if we do something like this, I think that's going to be a big topic that we'd want to, I don't know, I mean, we might be out fishing, looking for input, or are we looking for, by that time, more commitment, you know, so it all depends on where we're at with that, empower but blocks of time.
Right. Any ideas, if you have any ideas on that?
Forward them, forward them on to your fellow commissioners on the committee.
And that's Mr. Bergstrom, Karen and myself.
We've always looked like for your district, you know, you represent what's in your district, are there large corporations in your district, or new businesses in your district, like when Myers came in and had them present, and so.
Good time for Douglas Valley to come up with us. So some samples, I get a little over.
And we're actually wanting to see that room for a second.
We're a little side of it too, fair.
Actually, I'd earlier, actually, I'd have turned Mark Fisher, because that's good as a guy, really thinking about it, you know.
You know, we're, we're also going to seriously consider having the commissioner have a bit of time before each session to. of time before each session to to say something about his district or his his particular issue or, because that worked real well before. So brush up on your public speaking skills.
I'll go back to, yeah, I'll go back to the city, you know, like wanted them to kind of be part of us and do a presentation a few years ago, but I'll I'll go back and see where they're at.
All right. Anything else, Bert?
That's it.
Okay. A motion of immunity to accept the regional summit committee minutes?
I'll make the motion. Support.
Support. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Okay, Tom, you're up.
Well, just one item on your agenda that I normally take the weights and means, but it came after the fact. And it's really just kind of a rubber stamp type of thing. Every year, the district health department sends us a lease agreement that is approved by both district health and the county. And it just outlines the value of the space that we have the health department located in across the street. Hasn't changed at all. The number of square feet that we provide them is still six thousand three hundred and thirty-five square feet. That changed a few years ago when MSU extension moved in, but the value of the space is still eighteen dollars and fifty cents a square foot. We never receive that money. They never, we never bill them. They never, no money ever exchanges hands. It's mainly just to make sure that all ten counties are equally funding and getting funded. It was something that that was very unequal years ago, many years ago. And so they've started this and they actually receive state and federal funding as a result of this. So it's really just to outline the value of the space that they're in. So it's kind of a rubber stamp thing, the lease. We never collect any money because we provide them with money. So it would be just. Yeah, we need a motion to approve the lease agreement between district health department number ten of MASTY County for the 2017 year. And authorize the chair to sign it.
You asked for that. Tom, you should bring it to where you can.
I just said, it came after the fact. I didn't want it to run into March because it started January first, so it's.
Okay, we've got a motion and a support for renewal of the district health contract for the.
I'm sorry, which one motion and which one's.
I made the order.
Okay. Thank you.
And I guess any further discussion? Hearing done? Clerk call her all, please.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Yes.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Jakely?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Shaper?
Yes.
Ms. Bergstrom?
I'm sorry. Batser? Yes.
You want two responses from me?
No, I was, no, Mike.
The only.
It's amazing.
Northern Michigan Regional Entity is another one.
Well, yeah. The only other things that I have that would be more of a report from me would be just a reminder that you have, please make sure you have in your calendar, the seventeenth of March at nine o'clock AM at AES for your study session, to continue discussion on the strategic plan. And I also included in your board packet, you don't have to take any action if you don't want to, but if you want me to respond to Mr. Wajinski regarding the O'Necoma Marine letter, the O'Necoma Marine claim, we've already responded to him saying, no, we're not going to make a goodwill payment. The insurance company says it's not our fault, we're not going to pay. He has now come back with a letter saying, well, yeah, at least pay the deductible, which is twenty-five hundred. I don't know whether you want to.
I'm going to motion to make a goodwill payment of twenty-five hundred dollars to Mr. Wajinski.
Is there a second for that? Is there a second for Mr. Bergstrom's motion? Okay, it's going to die for lack of support.
I'm going to AES five times. Three times, he's got one more.
I will send him a letter again saying that it was discussed.
I did have a question about the March seventeenth meeting. How long are we scheduled at AES for the strategic plan meeting?
It's scheduled for nine to twelve.
Okay. I actually have a solid ways advisory committee meeting in Traverse City starting at one o'clock that day, so I would need to leave probably by eleven-ish.
Probably, we're pretty much tired of discussing.
Any good news? Not an issue. Get it on up.
Don't we have the board appointment?
We do.
Yes. The only other thing I want to remind you of is make sure you have in your calendar your next board meeting is at five o'clock, nine at nine in the morning on in March.
Are you going to call us over? Make sure we get that.
We will make sure you know about that, but I just.
Have the location.
We'll be dealing with the.
Location.
Location.
Yeah, once you learn.
And and the other thing is you just have one more thing on your agenda that needs to be dealt with.
Northern Michigan Regional Entity, is that going to take full board appointment?
Yes.
Okay. So we need to reappoint Commissioner Schmidt to the Northern Michigan Regional Entity on our behalf. So with that, we would entertain a motion.
I'll make that motion.
Motion with support. With support. Any further discussion? Not we need to vote call her. Clerk call her all, please.
Ms. Dan?
Yes.
Ms. Goodman?
Yes.
Ms. Jakely?
Yes.
Ms. Schmidt?
Yes.
Ms. Shaper?
Yes.
Ms. Batser?
Yes.
Ms. Bergstrom?
Okay. Quick review here.
I got some stuff.
Okay.
From the committee, I got quite a bit actually. Started with nine-one-one. I'm the chair of the nine-one-one board and I'd like to announce that the board passed the expenditure of over a hundred and eight thousand dollars for communications equipment to the individual fire departments. Pretty much brings all of the departments up to speed, but they all have the same pagers in place. Also provides one dual band radio to each department, which would be in the, actually the chief's radio, so it doesn't have to carry eight hundred big earth radio and a high band radio. A lot of other little things, but the bottom line is that a hundred and ten thousand dollars, a hundred and eight thousand, we give a hundred and ten thousand dollars max is some of the money that we've been telling you all these years, this is what we're spending this stuff on. It's a hundred and ten thousand bucks.
Is that a grant fund you choose?
No, that's.
Millish is millish.
Those are millish dollars that you approve each year. That's that's the nine-one-one.
Are they going to spend all that money this year?
Yes. The. Can't remember the name of it now. It's the data terminals each of the vehicles. That's been an ongoing project for about two years.
Yeah.
That is that has finally been installed and everything is functioning correctly. The only thing they had left to do was to upgrade the programming for the software which locates each individual vehicle wherever it is in the in the area. And that was a, an upgrade that had to be done after the systems were installed, they go in and that fingered into the actual computers.
Is there something that had to be done with one of the towers or something?
That's 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 still, that's still on the board. They were going to go with freestanding tower, then they wanted to go back possibly to renegotiation with these to the property owner. And I think now it's going back to a freestanding tower because of the the issues that were happening, so.
Those mobile data, is that for all the cars?
It's everything. It's tribe, that's, they pay for their own. That's sheriffs, departments, city police.
Law enforcement.
Law enforcement. Okay, that was nine-one-one. Move on to the airport. We're getting ready to resubmit the request for bids for the hanger expansion. That's moving forward again this year. Still looking at having the hundred thousand dollar guarantee from the county plus the money we received from the insurance company on the door replacement. But that is going to be moving forward here in the very near future. The airport manager, myself and the vice chair, I am the chair of the airport authority, will be attending the airport managers conference and licensing. I'll be leading the CV for that. And we'll be training on Thursday. Moving on to Dalaride. Heaven forbid, the bathroom is in construction. We've been working on the new bathroom for Dalaride for, I think, almost two years with the paperwork from the from the state. And all those funds are are grants and stuff and there's no monies being expended by Dalaride on that one.
They have the new building.
They do.
In the newer building.
Right. Well, they have a bathroom, but it's.
You're talking, you're talking new, newer building with a big garage.
Right.
No, that's not.
This is, this is in the old building. This is the salmon.
Yeah.
The salmon colored bathroom. Yeah, we're getting, it's newness.
All right.
Right? It was, it was indeed. So that's the Dalaride. Also, a note last month on one day, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Pauline, but it was eight hundred and ninety-seven passengers in one day.
What's going on?
Just people leaving the ride.
New Year's.
The 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 JARQ system, which the Dalaride director brought information on here a few months ago, where they were going to extend the hours, that's also been received very discreetly. They're open from five o'clock in the morning till seven o'clock at night now for passengers. So Dalaride is doing quite well. And revenue sharing board, I had my first meeting. We had elected officers, set the calendar and left nineteen minutes. It was over. And that's all I have to report.
Carrie?
Not much to report. The only thing I am disappointed about is that in March I will not be here for the evening commission meeting. I'm one of those people that wanted it so bad.
We'll switch you on in the morning.
I'll be in Washington DC, so I'll be available.
You got a laptop and.
Yeah, I could.
Yeah, we'll, we'll sex you up.
Was what, to Donald?
Stream.
Meg, you have any?
I don't have a lot. The only thing I just wanted to remind everybody is that there's a meet and greet with the new executive director Xavier Verna at Hardy Hall this Thursday from five-thirty to seven-thirty PM. And on Saturday, the twenty-fifth, this coming Saturday from ten to two, the Armory Youth Project is having an open house.
Thank you. Richard?
Is that an executive director for the Rams?
I believe that's correct.
Yes.
The Rams and I can't, yeah.
Okay, that appointment I just got for NMRE, that's for substance abuse, and that's where I go and check out the substance abuse money. And NMRE, NMRE, last Friday hired a new CEO.
Can you say the name?
I can't remember what the name was. But there were two individuals, remember they made a job for Dave?
Right.
This guy was a contractor down there. So I think that's where Dave's moving in, he's moving out.
Interesting.
That's all I've got.
No, I'm. The attached alcohol meetings are covered.
Pauline?
I have a new golf course in Arcadia Township. I'm hearing that very well. I was receiving very well. And of course, you know, the sort of situation that that district is moving forward. The next step, there are many steps to be taken.
There are many. So we want to process.
Is it the same ownership?
Arcadia Block, yes.
So it's putting in a second course here.
On the corner of.
Thirteen mile and M twenty-two, the northeast corner. So that's not going, oh, Meg, we're going to make an appointment for you to be a member of the trail committee. So that's an official capacity. I already brought up the zoning issue, dialogue has been started.
So are you appointed today?
Yes, yes, yes. That is from the chair. All the one thing, a personal note, I'm leaving this evening to one of my son's house in Grand Rapids, and then from there we'll be heading to Houston Tuesday, start the clinical trial on Friday. The real clinical trial really won't get going until actually Wednesday next week, when my T's, new and improved T cells are injected. So I'm going. Appreciate all the support I've had from everybody who's been to events and hopefully I'll come back a new and improved guy in a couple of weeks, so at any rate.
Dark hair?
That's going on with me. Pardon?
Dark hair?
I don't know about that. Of course, I could dye it somewhere in Rob, but at any rate, hopefully I'll still have hair when I come back. If not, you look at Mr. Clean. Anyway, thank you for a meeting and and thank you everybody for their support and support is chair. I enjoy the position. I, it is much appreciated, so at any rate.
If there's anything that we can do for you, do your best, just like you say.
Thank you. All right, with that, I guess that's going to conclude the meeting today. Oh, I'm sorry. Nipper, anything? No, it's not. Now it's not.
Good person, I was...